All right. This time I'd like to call the regularly scheduled City of Taft Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, March 2, 2022. Excuse me. We are meeting in City Hall Council Chambers at 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California, Effective June 22, 2021, Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity sitting and are also being livestreamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW YOUTUBE DOT COM FORWARD SLASH USER FORWARD SLASH CITY OF TAFT. Public comments can all can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at Y Mayfield at cityoftaft.org. Excuse me, cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. At this time, I'd like you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bob, would you lead us?
Sure. Salute, pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation will be by Kathleen Johnson.
Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus and we thank you for for this city, for this region, Lord, and we just thank you for blessing us with wisdom and understanding as we move forward in these decisions, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We're at roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Doughton.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Lycomb.
Here.
That brings us to item one, citizens' requests, public comments. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. The state law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. At this time, there is no one signed up, no emails, no Dropbox, nothing. Okay, very good. That moves us to item number two, which is the minutes from our February 2, 2022 regular meeting.
Move to approve minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lycomb.
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Yes.
Commissioner Doughton.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin.
Yes. That carries on a five zero. Item three, Planning Commission review, alternative accessory dwelling units and other residential land use development standards. I'll go to our planning director.
Thank you, Chairman Orrin.
Welcome.
This is just a discussion we have this evening and it follows up on the work we just finished with mending the zoning code for to comply with the state law that was signed into effect last fall regarding allowing two units on single-family residential zone property because they're trying to stimulate and give every variation possible to get more housing units in the state of California. So we completed that and if you recall, we at one point touched on some alternative ways to get accessory dwelling units onto properties. So we're just going to focus on that tonight. We wanted to revisit it and so I brought this back on the screen and on your staff report, there were five questions I put out there which reflect a draft ordinance that's attached and it's pretty simple. We'll go one question at a time and get feedback from the commissioners on how you feel about some of the options and if you want to look at some of the details, it's on in the resolution that's in the back and most of the changes are in pages four and five of that resolution with these alternative accessory dwelling unit types. So the first one I'm going to go over is the, in a way, the most simple one, which isn't really alternative, but it's an option that the state's really pushing cities and counties to implement is the conversion of existing garages. And if you take as strict a letter of the statements they make about doing allowing garage conversions is to allow it anywhere and everywhere. So, you know, the real extreme way to describe it is, is the commission and do you feel that residents of Taft are okay with all the two-car garages facing alleys being converted to accessory dwelling units or at least the potential to be there with just a simple building permit and converting that 400 some odd square foot space into a livable unit to create that accessory dwelling unit instead of it being an addition of some sort onto the garage, off the house, whatever it may be. So I'll open the discussion that Chairman, you can lead and, you know, get feedback from each of the commissioners and we'll work our way down this list, but we'll start with the garage conversion as an accessory dwelling unit. And just thoughts, ideas, how you feel individually, how you feel others would feel about it, if this is something we should implement into our options for accessory dwelling units.
Would you like my comments first?
Sure, however you want to.
Okay.
Go through.
I don't have a problem with the conversion of the garage. I have a problem without replacing the lost parking. My concern with that is public safety. As we move those vehicles into an alley, say, that restricts the flow of emergency vehicles in the alley, fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera. So I think that would hinder emergency vehicle process and progress to the site of a mishap or an emergency. And the other side of that is if we take the cars and put them on the street, then we created an additional hazard with the likelihood of drivers not recognizing pedestrians stepping from between parked cars. And I think that needs to be mitigated. The conversion of the garage isn't an issue, but I think the parking needs to remain on site for public safety.
A quick response to that, just to help the other four on their ideas on it is twofold. One, the state law regarding accessory dwelling units, no matter how we create the accessory dwelling unit, we can't require any additional parking spaces for that ADU. The way I have been approaching it, folks who have been asking about converting garages is we haven't permitted the conversion of a garage because that garage is required for the house right now, our parking standard, which I believe I have the table on the draft reso at the moment, unedited, shows you that we require a two-car garage for every house. So permitting the ADU to convert the garage means we're creating what's called a nonconformity for the house because it no longer has the required two-car garage and that's a conflict in basic state planning law. We can't permit intentional nonconformities to our zoning code. So if we would allow the garage conversions, we're not able to require even just a parking pad to the side of that garage, like off an alley per se, or even more paved parking if they have a driveway from the front that goes all the way to a back garage if you want to. I mean, they can if they want to, but we can't require it as part of the processing and to grant approval for that unit.
Are we talking about a full-on, like, kitchenette, bathroom?
It would still, those standards are in the code now for accessory dwelling units requiring at least some sort of efficiency kitchen and restroom or bathing facilities in the unit. So those still apply. So they would have to figure out a way to put it into the unit they're trying to create. So we already have those standards in place. Not so much for the other ones we're going to discuss, but when it comes to garage conversions, it has to comply with any other stick build addition or other means of creating an accessory dwelling unit on the property.
And in that design, is it going to be where they would open the garage door and it would be just open or they'd have to build a wall or?
The one thing with garages, as I'm sure most of you have noticed, with the garages on your properties, there's unfinished. So the energy efficiency requirements of a dwelling come into play, so they'll have to finish the interior to meet insulation requirements and that typically would be including a framing in of the 16-foot wide garage door if they have two eight-foots. Those would be closed in and whether they turn a part of one into the access door or windows or whatever it may be, all of that would have to meet the energy requirements of the state, which are already submitted with single-family home construction and other alterations to a house, re-roofs, changing out windows, all those have the energy forms that are required as part of submittals as it is. So we would, but an alternative housing unit where the garage door stays in place, I don't think would meet that energy code, so they would have to close it up in some way.
Well, Mark, regardless of whether or not the garage is converted, wouldn't there already be an ordinance on the book that says you can't park in the alley anyways?
Yes, yeah, as an alternative. So what Chairman Orrin says, all the cars would end up being on the street, which I think might be an issue for some of you.
The other part is?
But yes, alley parking, just blocking the alleyway, people probably would start doing that. That's a potential nuisance issue with parking.
But 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 we already have an ordinance that's supposed to be enforcing that.
Yes, because the alleys are a right of way like the street, so if it's blocking in any kind of way, they could be cited and ticketed and.
And this is only houses with garages in the alley?
No, any garage, so front-facing in the alley, whatever it is. So the new houses out of off of Hillard with all the front-facing garages, those would be able to convert as well if we put this into our zoning code.
And not that I'm a fan of parking out on the street, but it happens all over Taft anyways and usually it's up to individual cities HOAs to enforce not parking in the street and I don't think there's any HOAs here in here in Taft.
There's HOAs, but we have a condo and it has an HOA, so we have a couple parking spots.
In our housing development in the past, when we build units, it's an eight unit apartment complex, we require gas parking. What we're saying with by allowing you to convert a garage and lose your two parking spaces and bring a third vehicle in all likelihood to the property, three vehicles measure 54 feet bumper to bumper and all of these, not all of them, many and most of these lots are approximately 50 foot wide. So that really doesn't work and the people summarily disregard parking in the alley.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see that in your neighborhood as much as I do in the neighborhoods surrounding City Hall, but I see it frequently. Motorhomes parked in the alleys.
I lived in a three-car garage in San Diego. It still looked like a garage from the outside. The inside had sealed off. I must have parked my car, I lived there for four years, I bet I parked my car there right outside the place 75% of the time. The only time I didn't is I'd get a ticket every once in a while and then I'd back off, park someplace else for a while and then be back to parking in the alley. So I'm not sure that that even having code that says you can't do it actually will get people to stop doing it. So I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing I'm concerned about, already if you, you know, one of the nice things about riding a bike is you kind of go slower, so you see more. And one of the things I see quite frequently is especially with either the single-car garage that's in the back, there's a whole lot of crap stored around the garage, in the backyard, sometimes in the front yard. And by agreeing to do something like that, you actually decrease the amount of storage and increase the likelihood that that storage is going to be out where everybody can see it.
If they rent it out, they can afford a rental.
Well.
They could, they can afford a storage rental maybe.
Maybe. But my point is, is that I don't, I wouldn't want to encourage that kind of thing. I have no problem, for instance, if you're going to put a second story, a two-story, you know, build your garage and put another one on top. I don't have a problem with what you did with yours where you've got what looks like it could be a separate apartment if you wanted to be between your two garages, but you've made the space available for that. Just simply taking up a garage, to me, is is a, can create opportunities for ISOs, number one. I agree it'd be a parking problem, no matter what you say. And frankly, I think I'd rather see them, you know, do something else if they're going to try and have a accessory dwelling unit. Not everybody has a lot that's big enough like my mom's where I could probably put another whole house on it and have the garages and still the swimming pool and everything. And I think that there's an opportunity, that the the need to be careful about overpopulating an area by doing this. We are not a city, like a lot of them, where there's a problem with the amount of space available to build. So I would be in favor of doing the least that we're required to do by the state on most of this, rather than most. I mean, our last, what we had roughly 2,000 possible places to build another unit, that's not our issue. You know, if we were in Carlsbad or San Diego or LA or San Francisco, you know, coastal cities, then it's an issue. And that's really frankly what this bill was aimed at in the first place, was to force those to start meeting their obligations in terms of providing housing. So at least in this one, I'm not even in favor of approving doing garages.
Which is perfectly all right, too, to reiterate, not reiterate, say it the first time, of none of these need to be required. These are the outside the bounds of what state law is suggesting and all that. These are just trying to provide the sixth, seventh, eighth option of people want to get creative or maybe they do have limited space. So don't feel bad that all the things we'll discuss this evening will be rejected, we won't incorporate into our code. That's an okay direction to go.
Do we need to act on these individually?
No, I'm just taking your feedback on it. It's more, yes, more of a survey of the five of you.
I have a comment and I know that I talked to you. I'm in kind of that situation where when my house was built, there was no garage. So I wanted to put a covered, covered, a cover so I'd have a carport and I could park off the street in my, in where I'm supposed to park and maybe put an electric fence. So I talked to Mark about it and he said, no, because the first two parking spots have to be in a garage. And so I could have additional parking spaces, but I'd have to build a garage first and that just, that was a little frustrating to me and it, so I kind of am seeing this. I don't mind the idea of of having the garage conversions, but if there could be a way that we could allow those two spots to be uncovered and actually used for parking.
I guess I'm not totally opposed to the idea, it could be done right. I understand there's going to be pluses and minuses, but I know I have rentals in town, so I get calls all the time like, hey, there's no place to rent, do you got anything? And I hear that a lot. And some of the ones that are open are, they're not nice. So I understand we need a, we need, you know, a lot of people like these kids turn 18, they get a job, they move to Bakersfield because there's nowhere good to live here as far as getting their own place or whatever, to where if mom and dad had an extra spot, they can have their own privacy, but, you know, not be in the main house, but have their own privacy. So I see the need for it, but.
And all the other options are still there, which is essentially all things new construction, so for an ADU, so a detached one, one attached to the house but not connected with the doorway, connected to an existing garage or some other structure that's in the rear, second story on the garage, all those options are still available, but obviously when you have the three walls and a door opening with a garage, it's kind of the perceived easy solution for closing it up and creating a living space. There's some other.
One of my points would be it's not easy.
Right.
Because you got all that stuff to do in the floor cutting and all that and outside you would just dig. And two-car garages typically aren't lots that are big enough that you could put an accessory unit next to it on one or the other side.
The addition, yes.
I think converting garages has been around a long time and that if we were to announce to the public we were going to vote on it, I think that would be another fill-up-this-room type deal.
And one thing that may also help this conversation is that part of the downtown specific plan processes also includes a zone change, multiple areas, the zoning code and parking will probably be one of those. So I'll relay this to them as well. They may have some creative ideas, comments Commissioner Johnson mentioned and all five of you related to this. So there may be something in that path as well that whatever solution we end with here, it may not be ADU-related, but maybe it's a unique parking situation and then maybe that helps properties attach an ADU to some parking facility for those that have alleys and.
I've seen some houses where they converted over, but just turned it into a formal dining room and then turned the other rooms into a bedroom. So it's same same essence, they added more people to the house to make it bigger to support another kid or two. Kind of same thing, but.
Not to tangent too much off of it is, it wasn't intent of this, but similarly, an ADU gets rid of the two-car parking in the garage. How do the commissioners feel when it's maybe not ADU-related, so ends up being a game room or an expansion of the house or, you know, the new house is on Hillard, you know, they just convert that to more bedrooms or whatever, maybe. That's one thing we're going to be discussing, getting into as well with the zoning change part of the specific plan project is looking at some parking ratio options for the commercial side, but we're dealing with some residential as well in that project. So, you know, are we feeling comfortable with one-car garages, full conversion, but they still have the driveway apron for parking left over on the property and things like that? Is any quick ideas on some of that? Not to go too far into that.
Right, but are we just required to have onsite parking?
It's, well, the two-car garage, the single-family properties.
But it's also be designated, so in Kathy's situation, she does not have a garage, but is it cool if she gets a designated parking spot? It doesn't have to be concrete, it can be just designated. That's where the vehicles park.
You mean in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have, I do, well, I have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can, you can meet the intent.
You know, it's funny, my mom's house doesn't have a garage. It never has. It's just had some storage facility and I was thinking maybe we could do something like, you know, a cover, but I guess what I'm probably going to do is put in solar.
And then you have your.
That's a quick way to get a cover.
I talked to Mark about that possibility.
Yeah, so that's.
I got a location to put in my solar.
And then you can park underneath that. Well, I agree with Ron that we don't want to increase the amount of cars parking on the street. We have that problem in my neighborhood and what will happen is people will be coming across the street parking and can have angry neighbors and unsafe situations.
We don't have it consistently, but anytime there's a party, you know, people don't want to walk down to the house, they want to park right by the house in the garage, in the alley in order to avoid the extra distance. But that is an issue in some places, for sure.
So maintain the two-car garage or one car if it was built with the one car.
Yeah.
Okay. Second on our list was, and we're kind of going way outside the box on this, but partly to the recreational vehicle RV parking we were discussing a number of years ago, we kind of got in a little bit of what if somebody stays in it, what if there are water hookups, whatever, if there are electrical hookups. So how are we feeling if folks wanted to utilize a recreational vehicle as the accessory dwelling unit or allowing some level of living in that as an option on the property?
I know they're not designed to be lived in, so.
That's travel housing.
Or like a fit wheel.
Go on Wood Street and you'll see the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, just me blanketly, no.
Okay.
I didn't have a problem with what.
They're not designed that way. They give you a safety.
Being stor, being used occasionally, I can't remember his name all of a sudden.
Yeah, but that's, that's a little different. If you have an RV and you park it on your property and you have electricity because you are going to charge your stuff up before you go and you make it available to a visiting relative for three days, four days, even a week, but we're talking about making it a dwelling unit. So here comes all of the trash that goes with that, the recyclables that go with that, the additional bicycles and, and as John just said, it's not built as a structure to be permanently lived in.
Yeah.
It has a temporary holding tank.
Okay.
Doesn't have water supply.
I have mixed feelings about that. I know people are, they have needs, you know, and that is a reasonable, expense-wise, a reasonable way to meet those needs if they can't afford to do a remodel or, I don't know, I just have mixed feelings about that.
Well, we've worked with some folks who have managed, like on fire damage or something like that, where they've been able to get it onto their lot or things like that, but it's been real short-term, less than a week type occupancy and it's, we just kind of kept an eye on it and they're staying true to their word type of thing. People have been upfront about it, we're just.
I mean, there may be workarounds, it's like, you know, only up to five years old and you got to change it out because these things just structurally won't hold up well.
Right.
Not everyday living, they're just, they're not designed that way.
So if we were to allow this, in my opinion, we're perpetuating substandard housing and we're keeping people in poverty in poverty.
Especially the vehicle side of it, I tried to write in, you know, well-maintained because it has the tires, that's the base of that living unit, if you will. That's the easiest thing to go. that's the easiest thing to go after however long of not moving, you know, refilling the air pressure, and even those that aren't lived in, you, you could tell, because air's out of the tires, the roof's on the ground, yeah.
Oil's out of the engine.
Well, a lot of RV parks, um, won't accept an RV coming in that's over ten years old. But however, you see some beautiful, uh, vintage campers that are from the sixties that are well-maintained, I noticed that in, in, uh, what we approved last, last, uh, month was, uh, that there would, if that were approved, they would have to have a permit, that it would have to be, go through a permit par- process because of the electrical, the water, the sewer. So, my question is, I read through that, was if somebody gets a permit and gets it set up, and it's fine, and then they decide to change to a different camper, to get another one, so would that have to go through the permit process again?
Probably not, because they, they would have the necessary utilities, if you will, to make sure the unit is, uh, functioning well, along with the other options that we're listing at the moment, so, um, um, the water hookup, um, a reliable source of electricity for the unit, and then RVs are more of a storage, and they'll have to dump, you know, what they have, uh, so there's that issue. Um, I don't think there's really a way to set up a somewhat permanent sewer link to a unit like that. Um, so, that, that wouldn't be the case, it would be an electrical and plumbing permit for the water on an RV.
Well, th- they need to have their sewer connection inspected, too. Their sewer inspection would be inspected also, or their sewer connection would be required to be inspected, so you got a permit for the water. It, it's, it's a modified building permit, and, or it's a minor building permit.
Right, and, well, the other option would be that, um, if it's a true RV that's still mobile, or, you know, drives itself a Class A, B, or C, or Class B or C, um, where they'd maybe get a, um, dump card from us for our facility out at wastewater treatment plant, but I don't know, I don't know if RVs have ever been connected to sewer systems, or setting up their own mini dump site out of property, that probably isn't the best way to handle...
I don't know of any recreation...
They would have to do regular dumpings from the vehicle, so, that's another potential issue, is that they don't store many days' worth, so...
They do, they do have that.
Yeah.
I, I've been in a home that had a trailer, and, and for years, they had just had it hooked into the, the sewer line, with no issues.
But that, that's the one way where it does allow the city to be able to see what they're putting onto the site, and bring in the utilities to the parking pad location, um, and one thing I did mention is that all these options need to be at the rear portion of a property, um, to kinda help being out of, somewhat out of sight, so that it, if it does become a nuisance, it isn't too upfront.
We have an ordinance that your RV, if stored at home, has to be behind a six-foot fence.
Yes, so along this backside yard, or the whole rear yard, yes, so...
There's a site called Hip Camp, like hippie camp?
Mm-hmm.
And you can, it's basically like a VRBO, you go to someone's property, and they'll have either C-train set up really nice, or like a fifth wheel that you can rent for the weekend, and they're set up, you know, they're all permitted, I think, with the city, whoever they're at, uh, but they're electricity, water, and sewer, but it's for a weekend, or a week, whatever, but they're kinda set up permanent.
It's like an Airbnb.
It's Airbnb, and you rent their RV, their RV, or you can bring your own and hook up, uh, pretty cool deal, and they have a range of different things you can go to and rent, I mean, they got old trains, it's pretty interesting, but it's kind of the same thing, to be honest.
They're zoned into a commercial zone.
But it's, it's more...
It would be a designated camping ground, or a designated RV park, or something of that nature. And we would, we would allow that in an RV park, with, um, you know, some provisos that, you know, we're not just dumping some Ricky and Lucy nineteen forty-nine uh, single-axle trailer there, and people are gonna try to live in it.
Well, I, I'd, I'd like to know a lot more about hookups, the, the, you know, the, the water, the sewer, I, I don't really like the idea of, um, I don't know of a lot of places where they actually let you tap into the sewer to run your recreational vehicle's sewage through, to be honest with you, I don't know if they would allow it here. So, I'd have to, I'd have to, you'd have to know a lot more about that before I would even wanna start contemplating it. I am worried about the fact that they aren't made for, um, consistently to be, you know, lived in, there are, um, and as soon as you start talking about inexpensive, you're not talking about a new one.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're already talking about one that's aged out, probably, from whoever it's being bought from, which means it's less likely to have a longer life, or shelf life, than if I pulled up in a brand-new RV, so I've got some concerns that what might be available as affordable might not be something that would be a, a, a long-term benefit even to the person who's trying to stay there, and...
Long-term, you'd be better off converting your garage, money-wise, and long, you know, longevity.
Or getting the C-train, which I think is our next discussion.
Yes.
Getting a better job.
Well, there are that, I mean, some people aren't in that position always, and I, I get that, but I, I worry that we, we don't approve things that just make it harder for somebody to recover. Um, you know, it's one thing, I was telling Mark last night, I lived in a little teardrop, um, trailer with my best friend for a part of the summer in their backyard, that was to avoid the sisters, um, but that, that would not have been a really good living situation for longer than a couple of months.
Yeah, I think trailers, I just see a lot of issues, like, what if something breaks, there ain't a lot of mobile guys, especially around here. You can't call a typical carpenter, it's a different type of build.
For me, it is.
Probably figure it out, but I mean...
You figure it out, but it's...
If you gotta go tearing to a wall or something, it's, it's, they're gonna pull it out there every time and take it to...
It's not residential standard, I mean, the wiring in them is substandard, uh, a lot of them are plumbed with, uh, butyl methyl, there's a metal butyl, what is that gray pipe?
Yeah.
That is, um, notoriously bad for rupturing, and here you sit with just, you know, something that's, the problem is here, now you've just allowed it to be compounded.
And if there is a problem, is the city liable?
For allowing it, probably.
If there's a fire, or something?
Could be.
I mean, we're, if we're giving out a permit to hook this thing up and make it a house, we weren't able to open it up and inspect it as it got on-site.
Oh, looking at it.
That would be a question for you.
Just going down the rabbit hole here.
When, when, you know, if we were to do something like that, are we...
I think, I think it's a note that somebody's gonna wanna ask that question.
I understand, um, listen, first off, we could be sued for anything, so I certainly would expect us to be named in that sort of a situation. Whether or not that would hold up in a court of law is a, is a different thing, because we, if we're following the state guidelines and things that they're encouraging, that would certainly be a, a defense of ours, but the city would still have to fight its way out of it.
Yeah, I just think with like a build, we're seeing the open walls with the electrical and, and the plumbing, and we're verifying it's there and it's right. An RV comes in, if, say if it's five, ten years old, we don't know how many miles are on it, we don't know how much it's been beat up, and you don't know what's behind those walls.
Who's modified it.
Who's, so, I'm just liability-wise, I'm thinking...
It's like buying used houses, you don't know what they think was electrical.
And along those lines, too, and it just hit me where you're asking about city liability and all that, or the types of construction materials, if you will, of the, the coach, um, that I think it wouldn't be covered, or it isn't covered by the building code, you know, because the building code does somewhat define the livable space, and you're requiring heating and all that, where, um, installing this would be solely parking it, and then whatever hookups for the utilities, similar to the mobile home park, we don't issue any permits for that, they pull, even though that trailer's certainly more permanent than an RV, um, the, the coaches are prefabbed and certified by the state, so, in a sense, the RV would probably be somewhat treated the same way on these properties, and all we're issuing a permit for is whatever electrical and plumbing permit to get the utility set up for that, so, like you're saying, there's the unknown of what state those coaches are in, when they go on the property, so, that's definitely a concern.
And I'm sure your building inspector doesn't want to.
No, he would strictly look at if there's a plug for whatever outlet to provide power, and the water tap, and that's all he would look at to...
He comes to and he does his job.
Yeah.
You know, he checks, he checks the outlets and the breakers and the gas lines.
The building inspector is not gonna be inspecting the actual, um, trailer.
No.
He'll just be inspecting the connections, which, you know...
It's behind the wall and, and covered over.
And actually, the insurance question I would have is both the owner of the property, and, you know, what kind of li- liability insurance you can get for living in a recreational vehicle full-time, as opposed to an actual, you know...
That's true.
Um, mobile home, you know, type that are up in a...
You have enough information to synthesize?
Uh, we can move on to the C-train or a storage container, which is kind of a, not all that new, but it's, uh, you know, a creative way of creating livable space, it's been turned into commercial space in some instances, so, I'll leave it open to the five of you on how you're feeling about those. Um, everything from whether you like it, um, if we would need to look into, uh, design standards that the container can't, uh, be looking like it came right off the the train that has whatever company, brand on the side, albeit, you know, might look trendy for two seconds, but then it looks like a worn-out C-train that's made a couple trips across the country, or an ocean, so, um, feel free to discuss all that as well.
Well, I, I was, I was gonna say, it, it can almo- almost be looped in with, uh, number four, the tiny home, because the only difference is gonna be the outside architecture.
Yes.
And that is gonna be in the eye of the beholder, as they say, that's...
I have one, and it, it works out really good, actually.
You have one that you live in, or?
I don't live in it, I have it at my property.
Tiny home, or?
It's a container, C-train.
I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with the idea of using that as your starting point for a, a home.
Structurally, it's really good, the inside's built out just like a house.
I've seen tons of different versions of it in, in, um, you know, architectural magazines, you know, stack 'em, you know, crisscross sideways, up to, to maybe even as many as three levels.
And it's recycling.
Right?
Yeah.
You know, um, so in fr- in terms of the concept, I'm definitely in favor of looking at it, I would like to know more about, and I'm sure this is where you're going, too, Mark, I'd like to know more about how you do the approvals, what kind of requirements there are for exterior, um, the look of the exterior, all that, I mean, we do that with uh, residential development anyway, so it wouldn't be much different, but, um, I, I definitely wanna know more about how you would go about doing the approvals of something like that.
Well, isn't there something in the code that says that the ADU has to, um, be similar in finish to the, the, the initial dwelling?
Yes, and specifically the C-trains, because most have an image in their head of what they see on the trains and ships, so, probably would be a design standard, at least real general, that could say that the container would have to be, um, painted at least a singular primary color covering over all prior identification marks of the typical commercial, um, container, and then trimmed out as similarly to the home, uh, if a window was cut in, or, um, however it gets modified, you know, we don't have to specify the colors, but just a statement like that, where similar to the, um, main dwelling, you know, so when it...
I think that's, I think that's the point, it needs to be similar architect to the main dwelling, and fits the neighborhood. Now, we don't, our, our community doesn't have any really modern, um, houses in it, in, in the sense that they're linear and cubes stacked together and protruding, and that kind of stuff, um...
I can think of one house that even fits that criteria.
Yeah, there's, and, you know, there, there's a few that are mid-century modern, um, there's a few of those around town, and there's nothing, I mean, all of us kinda liked that architecture at some point, um, what is, you, you have one, how is it finished on the outside?
Uh, it's just original, but I don't have a house in the, like, I have five acres, so it's just in the middle, I got a storage one, and I got this one right next to it, and when it's all closed up, you wouldn't even know. But, if you could easily, I mean, these things are really limitless, what you can do, you can stack 'em by each other, cut out the walls, build it however you want inside, these things are bulletproof, literally, like, as far as structural, they're made to go across the Atlantic.
Yeah.
Stacked on top of each other twenty pi, however, I mean, they're amazing.
The only thing I wanna know is, uh, how we're gonna do design guidelines for it, to be honest with you, I'm perfectly okay with...
That's, that's up your alley, and, um, with respect to the paint on the exterior, I think that we need to make certain that, um, the paint is maintained, because that KYB will bleed through, or the Hunt Brothers, or whoever it is, with, uh, inexpensive paint, it's visible in months.
Or it wears off, yes.
Yeah, you oxidize, or use the wrong paint, it oxidizes, and that, see where the enamel marine paint will be there forever.
And then also, um, dig into if, um, our building codes are covering much of that, because we'll see, uh, we'll dig into that, just to see if typically they're coming, you know, pre-manufactured and dropped off, or how many are being created on-site, you know, bring the container, and then finish the interiors, and...
The Naz- the Nazarene Church purchased two, and bu- and with a permit, put them on their property, and they were required to, um, prep them and maintain them, and paint them to match the building where they are. I know they're three hundred feet from the building, and they're on, uh, probably five acres, but, yeah, it...
That's the inside of a...
I don't even notice they're there when I drive by.
Yeah.
I just know they're there. The difference is the five acres.
Wouldn't have even noticed unless you ju- mentioned what they were, I just, you know, there's some storage out there, what it looks like, at least.
Turn in, I know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing some warmer feelings with the C-train, so dig into more.
I think, I think there's things that can be done with them, and I think it is a viable alternative for inexpensive housing, but I need, that you need to really look at how it's done, and then with respect to it, you don't put a drop cord over to it and run a bunch of extension cords inside. It needs to be done in a way that protects public safety, I mean, that's what Stephen's job is ninety percent, what he does, so...
And the other thing is that, you know, like I said, I've seen lots of designs of them in architectural magazines, well, that means they've been done at a high-end. We need to know what, what it looks like at a, a average person's use of it, like, high-end ones are always gonna look great, it's kind of like an old case house, right?
Yeah.
Worth a million dollars today was a, was supposed to be affordable housing in the fifties.
I, um, what's his name at the Legion?
Gary's?
Not Gary, his sidekick, he was just made, was just made citizen of the year, or whatever.
Ed.
Ed, Ed Gaiter, there's a development of these in Las Vegas, in the downtown area, he's pretty familiar with them. You know, and if somebody's over there, it would be nice if they took a few sn- shots of it, and, or we looked it up on the internet, and you could help us see what that can be done.
It's called a container city.
Yeah, I think it's more conducive to, um, an isolated, small development, two acres' worth of immediately accessible, um, startup businesses, that kind of thing. And if we're talking about shelter, it would also work for that, but I don't want them to put shelters in the backyards around town that are not really, you know, no rest of none of that stuff, uh, that creates health issues.
Right, okay, well, I'll dig into, uh, more information there, maybe I could find some examples in other cities that are been welcoming in, and having some standards that we can take a look at and delve through, and as you, uh, the five of you mentioned, it kinda leads into the fourth one, which is the, um, tiny home, um, the ones I think of are the ones you see still have the flatbed trailer that they're mounted onto. I think a lot of them are somewhat permanently mounted on those, so they can be towed off to some other place, and, um, so, I'll leave the discussion to the five of you, um...
I'm waiting to s-
I think the key thing will be, uh, whether that, uh, flatbed portion of it is acceptable, or would you want the standard to be, uh, that, um, that's just a shipping mechanism of getting it there, and somehow gets, uh, put onto a, a permanent foundation type of deal?
Going by what I see in my, you know, backyard, the, the one that our neighbor is, uh, working on, he, he's only, so far, it's only been framed out, and it's on the, the, the big trailer, um, that's permanent, it's not coming off of the trailer, it's a, you know, you know, they used to with, uh, the real old mobile homes, they used to actually just have a skirt that went around the... That went around the, the lower portion of it to hide the, the wheels and everything. I don't have a problem with a skirted, uh, frame. I mean, you, you're gonna be, I don't know, three, three and a half, four feet off the ground in one of those. Um, and all I can see is, is right now, it's just the framing, so I can't really. I also know when I look out the backyard, I can, you know, see it, it's almost as tall as my mom's house.
Sure, he's on a raised foundation for all intents and purposes.
Right, and, and it does have two stories. I mean, you know, they're not exa- not exactly a full story each.
A loft inside?
Yes, and, um, but, you know, properly placed, I don't think, for instance, if this, if, if we had it put in the, all the material they needed here, it wouldn't be a problem in, in our backyard particularly, because the only people who can see it are the people that are looking out their back, back door. And frankly, again, I've seen a lot of, of versions of it, including the ones that are not placed on a trailer. Um, kind of what we were talking about with the, um, prefabbed. I'm in favor of any of those kind of things that have some, uh, approvals through, you know, the building code, because I think there's building code requirements for, um, most of that. And if there isn't, then there's other code requirements for the tiny homes. I know height is an issue for another reason. They can't be too high, because there's certain places they couldn't travel then.
Right.
Bridges are a problem for some of those.
So it's one thing I don't have listed on the questions, or even the, the fifth isn't really a question, it's, uh, talked about permit requirements and all that, and we've discussed that, but height, with this one in particular, because it's already starting two to three feet, feet off the ground, some tend to be kind of narrow and tall, if you've seen enough examples of these towed, um, tiny homes. What kind of height?
Well, there could be some issues too, to where if they just pulled it in along their fence, and then now you're two feet from the, from your neighbor's fence, and then they're looking right into your window and vice versa.
We have, we have a side yard setback requirement.
Um, specify even more so, or reference the setback requirement that's in earlier sections, to at least get it the four feet away from a fence. Um, granted, anything taller that might have a window or whatever could still be tall enough and look at a property.
Do we have anything about shadowing your neighbor's property?
No, because one thing is the overall height allowed in our R1 zones allows two-story homes.
Mm-hmm.
Although predominantly we have one stories, so, um, there's that general ceiling overall for heights in a single-family property.
Those are typically on fifty-foot lots also, fifty-foot widths.
But with this being something more accessory in the back, and typically a garage or something else that's accessory, you can set some sort of height limit, you know, your gazebo's and patio covers and.
Uh, how, I would like you to consider this when you're thinking about it. If it is, uh, going to remain on the trailer, um, wheels to be towed.
Yep.
It has to be short enough that it clears the utilities in the alley, or the utilities that cross the street, or the bridges, you know, there, there's a height. The CHP has some sort of rule about how high it can be.
Clear most bridges.
Like thirteen, ten is it.
And I know the guy that drove his here had to avoid certain roads.
Yeah.
Um, because the bridge was actually lower than what we normally build a bridge height for now, too. Um, and the same, same, the same problem that anybody who's driving a, a big rig has, is that there are certain roads you don't take, cause you simply can't make it under the bridge. Um, and I guarantee you that if this were completely filled, uh, done out, he could have a good view of our backyard, this, the, you know, the swimming pool.
Baseball fields.
Yeah, you know.
High school.
Um, ours specifically, because there's nothing there, that a lot of, I think that that is gonna be an issue for anybody who's a neighbor. I still think it's a good idea, but you, you do have to be aware that somebody might not like the idea.
It, it might sound arbitrary, but, uh, a traditional height for accessory things in the back, one-story garages, gazebo, all that, is usually around fifteen feet at the most.
I think that's.
And even a lot of these tiny homes don't get overly fancy with a pitched roof. A lot of times it's still somewhat flat or boxy-ish, um, more often than not. Um, but even then, the, a roof might just be the two twelve, three twelve, almost flat, not almost flat, but real low pitched. So, um, it wouldn't add too much unnecessary height, but fifteen feet.
I've got a feeling this is.
Still plenty tall to, you know.
I've got a feeling the one in my backyard is over fifteen.
Rear yards, but that's kind of a traditional height for accessory structures.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think.
And I'm thinking this is probably closer to eighteen feet, because you've got the three to some odd feet of, of trailer. I think it's probably fifteen feet inside.
I, I don't, I don't really like the idea of, of tiny homes on trailers. I just, I think it has too many problems, the same as an RV, because you've, if you're gonna be moving in, then you've got your, your sewage again, do you have to disconnect? I, I don't even know what the purpose is of having a tiny home on a trailer, but.
A lot of them are like park models, that you rent it like pissball.
The guy over here, yeah.
A lot of trailer parks or, uh, RV parks actually have them in place and just to rent out for the weekend.
And when the gentleman that finishes, the one that, that's storing it at our place, he, his actual job, he's in Texas right now. Um, his job is one where he travels quite a bit, and so this is going to be his mode of living. And it's probably fine for one person. I don't know if two people would like it too much, just. But, um, I, I think that you've, first of all, I think they're much more sturdily built than a mobile home or anything of, of, of that nature.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this and it's, it looks like commercial construction, you know, the, the, um, the frame is, uh, I don't.
Probably steel.
Steel or, or something like that. It looks like that commercial construction for the framing, not, um, not uns- insignificant. Um, you know, maybe some of the interior might have aluminum, um, to do some set wall separations and things like that, but.
So one thing I'm, I think I'm gleaning from the five of you is that, in this particular case, the prefab nature of the tiny home is liked, but not the trailer aspect. So if someone would place one on a foundation on the property, as opposed to it sitting on the trailer still, there's probably some.
Well, I think they're built, I think they're built on the trailer. I don't think you remove these things.
Right, but one that might use a trailer as their measuring stick for creating a narrow, long, you know, prefab.
Maybe what you, what you do is look at, mobile homes roll in on axles, they get stored under the building and a skirt put around them and brings them down to near, uh, regular height. So it's a minor excavation and you do a little retaining around it and it, and you can drag it out of there. You have to put the wheels back on it, but that's like changing tires, really.
So you're mentioning, you're referring to, um.
The trailer thing.
Mobile homes are placed on those, uh.
Temporary axles almost.
Well, the stilt type, uh, the short stilt type, uh, foundation, as opposed to a permanent concrete one.
But all of, all of the new ones have to be on a seismic control element. So, uh, we don't have any here in town that are on seismic control, but out in the Valley Acres area, yeah, they have to have that, that device installed. So I, I may just say for them, like, you know, we see it all the time, hurricanes, they rattle off the foundation or three blocks away. You know, they skip like stones, so.
You know, I, I think that there's different heights too. I'm looking at some pictures, um, where the, it looks like the wheelbase in the trailer is lower. This guy's has got a heavy-duty, um, set of, uh, it's four tires.
You got a commercial flatbed with three axles and.
Practically.
Putting that thing on top. He used to haul bulldozers with it.
You probably could with this, you could probably haul a few, few big vehicles with
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I think, I think what I'm getting at though is, is that there are, I think there's two kinds of tiny homes. You need to look at the ones that are, um, not mobile. And then take a look at what mobile kinds there are and maybe, uh, see what the different, um, criteria are for them. Um, but again, I'm perfectly fine with one that's not, uh, not on wheels, but, and I'm mostly okay with ones with on wheels too. I just think that maybe if, to give us some more to talk about, to, to look at, are there height differentials, um, you know? How, how mobile do they need to be? I mean, it's clear that this gentleman's is going to be mobile, mobile.
Okay. Have you, I think, have, uh, received a lot of information from all of you, which has been good.
I mean, all five are addressed, right?
Well, four. The fifth was more of the standards that would help i- if some were feeling better about the RVs and whatnot. The way to at least help check the initial installation would have been the permit process and all that, but, um, with RVs not being so favorable and, uh, um, and then the last tiny home with the, being fixed to the trailer and things like that, they, uh, share similar issues. So I'll look, uh, more into the C train and, uh, it seems like we're holding off on the garage conversions, so, which is perfectly all right. We're being more definitive on what we're liking with it and, uh.
Okay.
But we'll probably be coming back with, uh, something later this year, either in that zone, um, amendment through the downtown specific plan project or something later, because we're gonna be getting into the housing element and there might be some.
Okay.
New creative ways of, uh, drafting our code to, um, get some of those units built here, um, and have them work well with, uh, the, the homes we have here and the ones with alley access, the ones that don't have alley access.
Have we had any look on developers?
Um, no, it's been pretty small. It's usually been, uh, those that we catch them in the middle of clearing out a garage, getting ready to frame up and close up the doors, and we have to tell them to stop and, um, so that's been the most popular, because you got three of the four walls finished, you know. But as Chairman Orrin mentioned, and I didn't delve into, is, uh, even if you did do a garage conversion, you basically would have to tear up the concrete flooring, because it wasn't prepared the same way the house was with vapor barrier and other things that help with the, um, temperature control and how the slab survives. Plus garage slabs are, most times have a slope that a, the slab of a house is not sloped. So I don't think you want furniture and other things leaning, so.
Yeah, goldfish slide out of the bowl.
Yes. So there's, there's those little details we didn't discuss, but it's, that's what, oh, some walls somebody would run into if they just tried to weekend warrior or something and run into that issue, so.
Have we had any outside developers that can build downtown?
No, that's, uh, one thing we'll have to, um, cha- not change, but, uh, use a similar focus we've been doing on the commercial side and start outreach into the builders in the valley and Bakersfield area to get them here. Um, normally there'd be a, a, a little more robust association that kind of makes it easy to get ahold of them, as I've experienced in Southern California and Northern California, but the Central Valley and Bakersfield area one i- isn't as robust of a advocacy group as it is elsewhere. So it's not as easy to solicit, uh, the builders, if you will.
I don't think you're gonna interest D.R. Horton.
Well, they, they, I did speak, actually, funny you mention them, I did speak with someone a number of years ago on that. I showed them the track that's under development and all that. They seemed interested. They were looking for suburban towns to find a chunk of land to build their however many lots, but unfortunately they didn't take. But, but us reaching out to them to make sure they know there's an option out here on the west side of Kern County, not just Bakersfield and the, the towns that are immediate to them, so, uh, that's something we have to start working on to get a, a builder out here, because we have the areas to build. There's still portions of, uh, the Sandy Creek Estates that might be able to be sold off to another builder to do a section of seventy, eighty homes, or whatever it may be, so.
How about those builders that were, that built the houses on between Sunset and Pilgrim?
That company, uh, closed. There was Freedom Homes, they were building here, building in Arden and elsewhere, and part of their kind of shutting down businesses, they either sold off property or just built out properties and whether they could sell or rent or whatever it may be. I believe all the homes there are sold to individuals, not all of them, okay? So.
I thought a few of them are rentals from them.
Okay, they're still rentals today, yeah. So they were able to sell some to where they could just sell them off to individual homeowners, and they were doing it here and across Kern County, um, because they were just getting out of the home building business. Oh, I know there's that.
Oh. That kind of ends the partnership.
Yeah, but they pretty much followed, uh, the two or three designs of the homes that were there and, um, actually pretty nice, uh, homes that were finished there. Um, but yeah, they're no longer in the building. It didn't pass down to anyone, put it that way. Or may out, but they don't have any more land here in Taft, I don't believe, so.
You have insight. You don't need to share it, I'm just curious. You're smirking.
She's silent.
Okay, um. You want to address SEQA?
For.
Did, did everybody have, there's the next item of SEQA?
Oh, no, that's, uh, uh, standard, um, SEQA determination if we did a co- uh, zoning code change.
Okay.
So it stays put until we have a, uh, ordinance to act on.
Okay. So other than that, we're on to the attachments which relate to this.
Yeah, uh, I'm not gonna go into the details of it. It just was for you to review beforehand, or if, uh, certain comments that came up, I'd be able to refer to it, but the kind of free-flowing conversation we've had, um, has been sufficient for what I'm looking for. So that's all I have for this item.
Does that include your, uh, director's comments?
No, the director's report, I have good news. Our next, uh, workshop for the downtown specific plan is getting scheduled for the end of this month, Thursday, March thirty-first. We will be posting it anywhere and everywhere from the Ch- Taft Chamber e-blast on Tuesdays. People who've shared their emails in prior workshops or signed up through the websites, those emails will get the, uh, a copy of the flyer of, um, the event. I'll be posting it on the city website as well. Um, so Thursday, March thirty-first, five P.M. at the Transit Center. But if you're, uh, in that groove of zooming from home, you can as well. We are going to utilize, um, some of our TV production capability to, um, have a group in the Transit Center. People could, um, participate from home as well. And I think in general, uh, if you've been into our, our prior workshops, we've broken into groups to get some specific comments. And at a minimum, there will be a web group and an in-person group at the Transit Center Oil Dorado Room, and we'll do what we can to record everything. And those that unfortunately miss out, uh, will put the recording on the, um, project website like we did with Workshop One, which was fully recorded. Unfortunately, the website, uh, Workshop Two was not, so.
And this is the third of the workshops that they've agreed to help us?
Yes, this is gonna have more definitive information, a, um, a land use plan for the entire, um, downtown area from Kern down the front. And, uh, it's mixing up a little bit, some of the densities a little bit, taking the comments that the five of you provided, when we've, uh, gone through some of the, um, residential development types with those, the forms we had that showed how they fit on our twenty-five or fifty-foot wide lots and, um, and the feedback that's been provided from the two, um, workshops. One thing they're gonna look more into is, okay, you're okay with some of this residential commercial confirm architectural types that we kind of touched on a little bit, probably some color or design stuff to, you know, mold and shape what, um, the five of you and the council and the city are looking for. Um, and then the amenity part, so like parks and the passive stuff, uh, um, encouraging and not discouraging, bike riding, being able to walk to and from downtown and elsewhere, um, that the, when someone brings a development that it covers all those other little pieces and some nuanced stuff, um, when it comes to housing or even commercial development in the downtown area, or rails the trails as well. So that, that's what we're gonna be going over, uh, Workshop Three. It's kind of the, the community rubber stamping, what the, um, um, consultants have been gleaning from all the information they've received thus far. And, uh, those that own or live in the downtown area, they'll be getting postcards again. They seem fairly effective, so we'll be doing that again, so we're, it's, and anybody can attend. People who live in Taft, Ford City area, South Taft, Taft Heights, work here, will take all the input, uh, that we could get and how they, um, see the city, but we are kind of getting towards that final end of starting to say, yes, this is the direction we'd like to see for. see the city, but we are kind of getting towards that final end of starting to say, yes, this is the direction we'd like to see for new development, infill development, and, uh, architectural and other amenity details for any projects that come in.
Well, my comment is that this is the most productive group of people. I've, you, you got a real good group. It was, that was a real find on your part, so I appreciate what you went through to get ahold of them.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. With bated breath. We call on Mr. Epperson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No statement.
Very good, uh. I guess that leaves us. Anybody have something they want to say?
I guess the only thing I'd say, and this is mostly for the audience, not for you guys, but the, um, when they start bringing in the plans, that means they're starting to solidify. You, you need to get in and make comments. If you haven't made them, it's harder and harder each time it comes back to get changes made. This is, this will be the first time you can see a, a plan, but if it gets to the planning commission with you having your comments, it'll get harder, and the same thing going to the city, so. I really recommend anybody in the public who has an opportunity to come or watch on Zoom, to send in comments. This is really gonna be a, a, a key time to do that, where there's a lot more opportunity to make changes. This is just typical government. I mean, government tends to solidi- solidify their plans the more you get closer to the planning, um, commission meeting.
Good, thank you.
I think.
Nothing? John?
Nope, I'm good.
I, it's, it's the community's community. That sounds redundant, doesn't it? But it's your place. You live here, you work here, and giving these folks input is going to be very helpful to your well-being. And with, by you participating in this, you can make a difference. Often we feel we can't make a difference, because they don't listen. Well, we're asking you expressly to come and participate, so we can listen to you and see what the ideas are. This group that Mark has assembled to help us is a great group of people. I'm, I mean, they're, they're awesome. You usually talk to these folks and they're bladdity blah blah about they're credentialed, these people are hands-on, get it done, makes sense for you, so I appreciate that. Um, the other comment is, uh, keep mindful of what's going on around you. Pay close attention to what your federal government is doing. You have a vote. Thank you. That calls for someone to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, you probably want to appoint me to the.
Oh, that was, can we just make that permanent? We're doing it.
You know, it's.
I seem to be missing a page.
Oh, it was two pages instead of a front back. There's a short page.
Oh, he doesn't have a back on his.
I identified.
I went from memory. I've done this often, so, yeah.
I identified.
I think that was messing with me.
City Council meeting.
Oh, Darnell, okay, well.
Well, I, I think we got a mo- motion from Bob.
We did.
I'll second it.
And, uh, it's been seconded. All those in favor? And those opposed? None? That carries on a five-oh. We are adjourned. Thank you.